Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Board members may stay seated. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call, please?
This is Crane.
Here.
From, please remember our new-
Sorry, I am, yes, I am here, remote from Independence Township.
Mrs. Egan?
Here, remote from Independence Township.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Here, remote, Independence Township.
Ms. Catalina?
Here, remote, Independence Township.
Mr. Hayer?
I am here remotely from Springfield Township.
Mr. Need?
Here, remote from Independence Township.
Mrs. Horst?
Here, remote, Springfield Township, thank you. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community hearing. There is time for public participation as indicated in the agenda in Items 3 and 9. Item 2 is approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Hayer?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, the motion carries. Item 3 is citizens' request to address the board. Under Item 3.1, or you're given two opportunities to request to address the board. Under Item 3.1, you can request to address the board on any topic that's on tonight's agenda. Mrs. McLean, I see, is sharing our agenda tonight for all of you to see. Under Item 9, you're welcome to address the board on any topic. When making comments, please state your name and then direct your comments to Mrs. Kelly Horst, President, Clarkston Board of Education. So you can see, we have four items on our agenda tonight. Our Fall/Winter 2020 update and three action items. Personnel changes, a new policy on emergency temporary telecommuting, and approval of our extended COVID-19 learning plan. So now let me click over to our attendees tonight. So, attendees, if you wish to address the board on any topic that's on tonight's agenda, now is the time to indicate your interest in doing so. So if you are here by phone, and I only see a couple of you who are interested or attending by phone, that is star 9. Otherwise, you will click on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen and then the Raise Hand feature. And so let me give you a few minutes to do that. And then Mrs. McLean can call on you and we can identify which agenda item you are interested in addressing the board. We will go ahead and generate that list and then we can call on you at the time when we get to that item. And of course, we will have time at the end under Item 9, so if we don't get to you during the meeting. So right now, Mrs. McLean, I am seeing three citizens who wish to address the board on agenda items. Can you go ahead and activate those? And let's find out which items they're interested in. And we'll go first with, to David and Leah Meyer. I guess Mr. Hayer, Mrs. McLean, whoever wants to take control of that.
President Horst, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Dr. Ryan.
Wait, 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 this isn't the time we hear from you. I just need to know what agenda item you want to address the board on.
Oh, just in regards to the distance learning program.
Okay, I'll tell you what, then when we get to 5.1, we'll hear Mr. Ryan, or Dr. Ryan's presentation, and then we'll come to you at that point.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Erica Harding?
Hello, you hear me?
And so what, what item on our agenda?
Probably best under citizens' comments, item 9.
Item 9, okay, thank you so much. Okay, and Julie Monet? Monet, please.
Hi, it's Monet, Julie Monet.
So much, okay, and what item is this evening?
Yes, I'd like to give some comments on item 5.1.
Okay, very good. We will get back to you then when we get to that item. All right, thank you so much, citizens. Let us continue on with our agenda then. Item 4 is superintendent update. I will turn it over to Dr. Ryan.
Hey, Mrs. Horst, I'm gonna save it for my update as part of the Community COVID and Extended Learning Plan, thank you.
Okay, well then we'll move right into that. Item 5 is presentation items. Dr. Ryan, I'll turn it right back over to you.
Thank you, President Horst, and to members of our community or board, our administration, our faculty, our staff, our families and to our students. It's my duty to give you an update of our current learning modality and the state of COVID in the Clarkston area and provide insights into our next steps in terms of combating COVID and how our school district will be moving forward, at least in the short term. And honestly, I wish this evening that I had better news for our community. But what we've been as a board and as an administration trying to inform week in, week out, in regards to COVID activity in our community. And we put a presentation so that I can share some of the numbers with you in a moment. But I wanted to know, note that, first and foremost, as has been the tradition from Clarkston Schools from its inception, is to open our doors for children. And it is our sincerest hope that we can get past this current crisis, this current situation, as soon as we can, because it's our headlong hope that we can continue on in those traditions and do what we do best, which is educate children in our hallways. But in the midst of that, given our current circumstances, I think it's also important that how we pick and how we journey through this period of time needs to reflect not only in our opinions, our wishes and our hopes, not only for our community's children, but my own children at home that desperately and very much want to be in school, but also looking at the big picture of our individual staff, students, and community health overall, and the role that Clarkson Schools plays as a community partner and a member in the footprint that we have in relationship to this current crisis and this current situation, and how our decisions need to reflect not only, again, our thoughts and understanding and from the school vantage point, but also those partnerships that we have within the community with community public health and other experts that evaluate not only the big picture of what COVID is going on in our country and state, but most importantly, how it's reflected in the Clarkson community. And although I have a doctorate in education, does not make me an expert in COVID. And that's where I feel like it's my duty to become part of a larger team in understanding how we guide our school district through this time. And I feel like that relationship that we've had and built with the Oakland County Health Division that started roughly last summer and then has pushed through very closely, week in, week out, over the last several months, has been very, very well represented of a community that takes responsibility, in a larger sense, for the health and welfare of our staff, students and community, and looks to be a larger player in a solution to a time that obviously will not last forever, but needs to be managed and it needs to be done thoughtfully and it needs to be done based on the facts of our situation and not our feelings. And it has to be really guided with that sense that we can do our best to stay ahead of this right now and that there will be a time that we will be able to return at some point to a sense of normalcy and to the remembrances that we had of how powerful school is and how it will be again. But to that, to that note, the data I have to share with you, to me and to our Oakland County Health Division, was really clear in terms of the progression over the last three or four months. Mind you, in that initial uncertainty coming back to school, where schools across the country brought students back to different degrees and we tried to learn more about the effects of COVID, the relationship between the rates and communities and how it impacted not only the individual, but organizations like schools. And that with the support of the Oakland County Health Department, we did have a very strong window to re-enter school back in October. And I'm very glad and completely 100% stand by the state of COVID at that time to get us back into school. As you'll see, as it was reflected not only in the data, but the story that we bring tonight, that we were not able, as a community, to maintain those blue skies within Clarkston, to maintain that face-to-face learning as it was. But we will again, and I think we gotta look at it as, you know, if our community can cooperate and work with us, there can be a path and a road back into face-to-face learning. But it's not simply just a blind decision by your school district or by the Health Department. It really is a collective effort by the community as a whole. And as you see the first slide I have to show you up there, when it shows to Oakland County, in the research that we've done and in cooperation with the Health Department literally breaks down every school district in Oakland County. And I know our board members and I believe our community knows as well that there are 28 school districts in Oakland County. 28 individual communities right now that are fighting COVID and doing their best to manage what they're doing within their different learning modalities across this county. And looking at Clarkston now, for five straight weeks, we've been the epicenter of Oakland County in terms of case rates and progression of COVID in a number of cases. And it has not, at least been represented by no efforts of our school board, myself and many in our community that have asked our community as a whole to try to make as most responsible decisions as they possibly can to the limit and to cut this spread. But we've been significantly higher for a large part of the last five weeks. Every week, we've led the way in terms of higher numbers. And that held true all the way through this past week. And I was hoping, I was praying that we would plateau and possibly head down, not increase again. But again, we did increase. And as you see over the last weeks in our next chart, not only is Clarkston a leader within Oakland County, but if you look at the progression of cases, both measured by total number of individuals within our district boundaries in our community that are positive for COVID, and also the case rate per 10,000 of population. You can see from September to where we entered school in October, we were in a very good zone, a fairly stable trend. And then from that October period all the way through present, there's been a skyrocket progression of COVID in our community. There's undeniable evidence to me, as I look at that graph, progressing every week within those two-week periods of more and more cases of COVID. And our community, we have to remember, is a reflection of our schools. So as these cases progressed, Clarkston buttoned down the hatches. We did our absolute best, knowing that we had increasing numbers of cases within our community, to employ the best mitigating factors in terms of social distancing, mask-wearing, cleaning, and all the protocols that we worked to instill and to put into effect with the cooperation of the Health Department to great effect. And that continued on, if you look into our next graph, to, we hit a point to where even our best mitigating factors, we started to grind as a school district. Not only in terms of community safety and cases presenting within our school district, which was obviously extremely concerning, but by November 6th, we had 35 active cases that we identified in cooperation with the Health Department. That translated, both because of in-school contacts and out-of-school contacts, to us having 119 staff members in quarantine or isolation for 14 days. And we had that in a period of, or a total of, if you look at Clarkson Schools as a whole, of having roughly 900 to 1,000 employees. And this, this really hit all elements of our staffing. And that 119 was progressing week to week, higher and higher as the virus progressed within our community. This also translated into student quarantines. We had just under 700 students that were placed in quarantine by being in close contact, had to be either quarantined or isolated as part of COVID within our schools. We had to close three of our school buildings based on quarantining and not having enough staff in terms of teachers, custodians, front office employees and support personnel to be able to operate school. We did that in an effort to shorten our lines, why those buildings switched to distance format, of bringing the, any extra collateral staff in those sites to other buildings to help keep them open. But we were within a hair string, within the following week, of probably at least losing two to three other buildings in rotation. And we have to also make sure that our community knows when it comes to, why don't you just have substitute teachers show up? Our community needs to know that our pool of substitute teachers and that we share with other communities of Crown Oakland County was down to near zero. There was not any individuals interested in going into schools for the rate that substitute or a guest teacher fulfill those roles. And that doesn't even touch the tip of the iceberg to trying to staff custodians and building aides from keeping our cafeterias and hallways safe and cleaned to our recesses monitored. So just on a sheer operating of a school basis, we were grinding and struggling to move forward. We also had, at that point of November 6th, from zero for the first four weeks to seven cases in one week that were identified by the Health Department to be probable cases of transmission between staff to staff, between staff, or excuse me, students to staff and staff to students within our buildings. To our best efforts and our mitigation strategies that we employed, upon review of our Health Department, of our protocols that they felt were very strong, their advice and guidance was that we hit a critical number within our community, where the prospective chances of an individual who would come into our schools affected, infected, and their ability to transmit that had finally got to such a high ratio that we were now an active part of that transmission in our community. Although less than the general community, we had lost some degree of containment and that now we were responsible for cases that were actively put out into our community. And again, after review, we did that shutdown that was temporary. I was interested and very, very studying to the fact if there were areas that we needed to improve on with respect to our, our different cleaning, our distancing and mask-wearing. And we were given high marks by our Health Department in terms of the mitigation strategies that we employed. So it wasn't a fact or a function of a failure of the system, but more of a direct relationship by the dramatic increase in the number of COVID cases out in the community. And it didn't stop even when we paused our face-to-face hybrid and in-person learning. As you look over onto November 20th, this is after two weeks of distance learning, we still, again, this is just reported to us, 32 additional cases. And we still had, without even in-present person-to-person school, 43 staff members that were in quarantine. 172 students in quarantine, and that's just by their secondary contacts outside of school. Obviously, without coming to school, that would have been magnified many times over. And it should be also known that of the original November 6 cases of the 35, that's when the Health Department still registered those cases directly at school. We had a very small number that were actually reported to us, just called in or informed the school district of those cases. As of November 20th, the Health Department stopped before that even informing cases within school districts based on the load that they were trying to track county-wide. Didn't make it possible for them to inform school districts of every single case. And really, the 32 represent only those basically walk-ins of people that informed us that they had, in fact, had a close contact or had a positive case in their families. So we would estimate there would be many, many, many more, of more than those 32. So looking now, if you look forward from there and kind of look at the comparison between when we were in face-to-face learning and that increase in the overall concentration of cases in the Clarkston area, there's a very undeniable look of a trend that matches very closely between, as the virus progressed to a higher level within our community, that that immediately equated to interruptions and settling and making so that the operational component of our school district, regardless of any other view, became increasingly more difficult to operate. And as you see at the point where, if you trace it from that first week of October 26th, where we had Renaissance High School move to distance learning, to the following week, where on 11/4, we had two more buildings. And you watch that progression in blue, which is the per number of cases within our community. You see the direct relationship as the virus progressed in concentration in our community, we were shutting down more buildings. And we were to the very, very limit at the point on 11/5 that we anticipated, based on zero, again, zero. Every individual that was non-load-bearing in our school district was applied to a classroom or a hallway to keep buildings open. We had no reserves left and were operating on a skeleton crew when we moved to distance learning. We anticipated, if we would extrapolate that number forward, that if you traced the yellow line up, maintaining it, we would have had even a much greater number of students and staff in quarantine and having to shut the district down for operational reasons. We were on a trajectory that, to me, was very predictable. I can draw a straight line on a graph to see where it ends up. And that would have been, in my mind, incredibly, even more disruptive to do emergency shutdowns where we don't even have staff that can operate buildings for the students that are in them. Because it's one thing to say at all costs to keep the school doors open, it's a whole nother proposition when there's no teacher in the classroom there when the students arrive. And I think that our community needs to have that part of the message and understanding that as COVID increases in your community, the number of contacts and the number of quarantine that goes along with it immediately and can be traced to the interruptions of school in terms of being able to staff our buildings and keep a continuity of learning. And that's an incredible thing that has nothing to do with your opinion on COVID or in or out, it's an operational question because Clarkson Schools does not have discretion on quarantining. And when it comes to our reaction and our support of following the correct protocols, it was going to very, very limit our ability to conduct regular school into that first part of November. And I think that if you've been following in the grader, look within Oakland County, you saw that although Clarkson Schools led the curve in the number of cases, as other schools approached what we had in terms of rates at the beginning of November, they found themselves in very much the same position. This is almost scientifically trackable and was incredibly informative as we move forward because I can see, and as compared to other districts, our administrative team can evaluate exactly, looking at the concentrations of COVID in our community, at the point that it became so disruptive that we couldn't conduct school in a right way in terms of continuity. And I would imagine going down, as the virus stabilizes, we'll be able to charter similar course moving forward. So there's more hope in terms of the overall operational perspectives that we have as a school district. What we can't ignore, the other fact too, is, you know, looking at the first four weeks, we didn't have transmission in school. It's incredibly important to me, as your superintendent, to make sure that when individuals come legally, as they need to, to come to school and to work in a school building, that we have a level of concentration of virus in a community that mitigation strategies work. At the point they start to fail, it's problematic and it creates an unsafe environment that I can't be supportive of being part for our school district as well. So there's multiple layers to this. And I think that we really gotta look at the big picture. And as I go in kind of the summary, the rationale that led to the recommendations and where we're pushing our learning modality for the near future, is you saw that very much, it's not a secret. Obviously, as I stated, Clarkson has been the highest in Oakland County for the last five weeks. Oakland County has been high and on the very much increase, and so has southeast Michigan and Michigan as a whole. We are in a resurgence of COVID right now. And despite the mitigation protocols, our system's not impenetrable. And as increased rates in our community, they eventually translate and filter as part of not only the risk factors of contracting COVID in our building, but also just straight out shutting down our buildings based on looking at not having enough staff to fill in gaps as individuals are quarantined. So, other factors as we look forward that influence our decision is human behavior. Looking at this coming week with respect to Thanksgiving and a couple weeks past that, as we go into the holiday season, mid-December, there's gonna be potential for a lot higher transmission, not a lower transmission, not only within our community, but in county and state. And that is not gonna go along with the idea of what we need to have happen, which is a stabilization and a depression and downward trend in that virus again. And to cap it off, as I parlay and explain and try to make sure that our community sees all the elements that go into our rationale, like it or not, the experts that we have as part of Oakland County Health Division have examined the data, the same that I'm presenting and sharing with you this evening. And they strongly recommended to me and my team, they met with us as a group, against a return to in-person learning before mid-January. They believe that we're gonna continue to go up in the number of cases and that would be more and more problematic in terms of quarantining with our school through December easily and possibly into January. They do see a peak and a lot will depend on how responsible, because human behavior, although we can encourage, we never know exactly how people are gonna behave. We're hoping that people make good decisions and that we can slow the progression through December into January and that once we hit that peak and start to come down, that although they are telling me that the coming down part of that curve is generally slower than the rising up to reach the peak, we will reach a peak and it will begin to go down. And that they are gonna be working with us, day in, day out, to be able to evaluate that point to where our mitigation strategies, as they were working previously, would facilitate re-entry to face-to-face instruction. But right now, the Health Department is strongly recommending that we, at least till mid-January, pause our face-to-face instruction programs. So that leads me to our proposed course of action. And it is to continue distance learning for all K-12 students through January 15th, which is the end of the first semester. And that although we will have early childhood programs through tomorrow, that will be closed the week after. And the only reason, for those who question immediately of why do we have our early childhood program and not our K-12, the answer is twofold. Number one is, they've been open since the beginning and have not had significant transmission within their programs based on their mitigation factors and their size and how families are working within that program. And secondly, and as importantly, that program being a microprogram, we do have the resources to layer and to continue supporting that and providing subs and other supports that we can literally staff it because it's a microcosm of the entire school district, much different than trying to support all the buildings across our schools to have teachers in classrooms. We can focus and do our best to keep that program open. But, I'll put a big "but" in there. If there is transmission monitored within that program, if we see that to be a fact, if there's probable cases and/or we find ourselves having to shut down that program or parts of that program that make it no longer viable to move forward, we will make that decision and we will inform the families that we will have to close that with the rest of our programs. As before, it is my hope that the early childhood program can be a foothold and then expand and grow, increase and get back into full face-to-face learning for our entire district. And to that end, beginning in December, we're gonna evaluate a tiered re-entry, very similar to what we experienced back in September. Obviously, I need the levels of COVID to cooperate within our community to stabilize. I need our community to work with me to make that an opportunity and an eventuality. And we'll do just like we did before. Our tiered re-entry will start small, we'll build up. And our mantra is, put in what we can safely put in, in terms of programming, and what we can support and keep going and then build upon that, that success until we have all of our students back face-to-face learning. We're gonna continue to monitor through December and in January. Hopefully, it is my hope that we've reached that peak and are going down and we reach a partnership with, or decision with our Health Department and looking at local data that we'll be able to recommend a version of face-to-face learning as we go into second semester. Again, what we need to have happen is a stabilization or a peak in that virus spot and then a beginning to go down. And that happens in every one of these peaks. It's not a function that we never are gonna get face-to-face learning again. It's more of a function, we need to get that peak and then we need to start going down. Also, extremely positive news that we didn't have back in September is a vaccine. And my Health Department colleagues also believe that this is gonna be a game changer as we have several vaccines that have been shown to be highly effective that are on track to get emergency approval and start to be distributed through December, January and February. That will completely, potentially, give us another leg to stand on to push the face-to-face learning part. Because as I've been told, is that we're starting with healthcare professionals and as we go down, and people that are extremely at risk in terms of COVID. And then school personnel are right in the line before the general population to have that vaccine administered. So I'm very hopeful in the future that this crisis, this time, this period, will pass. We will be back to face-to-face learning. That is our goal, that is the goal of our Board of Education. It's the goal of our administration, it's the goal of every single teacher in the school district to get back to face-to-face. Nobody believes that we're gonna be in a permanent state of COVID distance, nor do we believe that the virus is gonna stay the same in terms of progression. It might not go completely away, but it absolutely will be in a place that we can continue a form of face-to-face learning moving forward. We just need to be mindful of the data as it pertains to our community, be in cooperation and continue to work with our Health Department and make to start decisions as a community partner because what the actions of Clarkson Schools matters, not only for the kids that we serve, but as a community as a whole and our place in making response. and our place in making responsible decisions as we move forward. So we're as my representing myself and our administrative team in Clarkson Schools, this is our plan moving forward and this is where we're going to head as we get through December and January. So that's my update as it goes right now, Mrs. Horst or President Horst. And I'd be want to take any questions first from our Board of Education for clarifications.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ryan. Trustees, before I turn it over to you, let me just remind you that we did discuss at our last meeting in public how we would proceed. And we did agree by consensus that we didn't feel there was a need for any sort of formal vote in terms of approving a recommendation tonight, that we felt when we approved our learning plan, which we will affirm a little bit later under action items, that that really covered how we moved in and out of this semester sort of operationally in terms of learning modalities that we had had that discussion in that formal vote back in August. And this really is an operational decision by the superintendent who has the authority to make these decisions and make these recommendations to us. And he keeps us very, very well informed, the community on a weekly basis, us even on a more regular basis than that. And so that was the discussion that we had at our public meeting two weeks ago. So I just wanted to remind all of you of that, that that was our discussion. And that as Dr. Ryan said, and I know we have stated as a board publicly repeatedly that our intention is to return to face-to-face instruction as conditions warrant as quickly as they warrant. And so under those parameters, that we felt just by consensus and just following the conditions and following your frequent communication with Dr. Ryan, that we could just have this as a presentation, sort of bless his recommendation through a presentation in a consensus tonight. So with that, I will certainly allow any trustee who wants to say anything, ask any questions, offer any feedback now. And then we'll get to our two citizens who wish to comment. So again, I can't see all of you tonight now that we're back in this format. If anyone wants to say or make any comments, please just go ahead and speak up. I can only see a couple of you.
Mrs. Horst.
Mr. Hire.
Can I launch right in? You know, I would reiterate one thing that you just said to make it super clear. And that is, you know, this board has told Dr. Ryan over and over again, we want to be back in person. And Dr. Ryan has told us over and over again, he wants to bring the district back in person. And we have echoed those comments to our community over and over and over again. And that still stands. That has not changed through this whole thing. I will tell you firsthand, I know many of you have kids in school. Like distance learning is not the best. Nobody has said that it's a good option. We are picking collectively here as an administrative board team operating very tightly. We are picking the best lousy option that we have at our disposal. Like that's what it is. Let's call it what it is. It's a lousy option. We're picking it. It's not meeting the needs of all of our kids. I wish it was. It's not. We know that. And we want to get kids back in school where they belong, where we can provide the best opportunity for them. And families have to make that decision. I think some families would pick to stay in the virtual program and that might be best for their families. That's great. We have that option for those families. A lot of families want to pick the in-person option and we want that option to be available. And I'll just say like, this is a question of logistics. It's not like we woke up one day and decided that we wanted to go back distance learning. Like this is absolutely a question of logistics. And I don't know that Dr. Ryan could have done a more clear job of laying out exactly what those pieces and parts are that are required to keep a building open with kids in it in the midst of a pandemic. Like, like we have to have enough staff to run the building. We have to have enough kids that are able to be in school to run the building. You know, when the, when the virus rates are such that they are right now in our community, there's a, there's a certain sort of threshold where it just, it becomes untenable. And it's not like we saw a data number, it stopped. It's like the cases were actually in the, in the, in the classrooms and in the schools. And that's really what, what led to making our decisions the way we've made them. And, and you know, we've, we've carefully considered what we want to do. We don't really think there's a path forward before January at this point. We've tried to be very clear with that. We're not trying to lead anybody on. We're trying to be a hundred percent transparent. Like at this point, it's all about what the community does. I mean, I would open tomorrow if we could, but it's just not logistically possible to do that. If the community stops meeting face-to-face, we can get kids back to school. It's, it's that simple. We need about two or three weeks of the community not interacting with people outside of their household and we would run school in person as, as we had been doing. And that is what is it going to take? And I, it's not any more simple or more complicated than that. That's the position that we're in right now. We have to follow the advice we have of the Health Department. We have to follow the logistical constraints that we have in terms of having staff and running buildings. And again, we're in a lousy situation. It's a lose-lose. Every email we get says, you know, I'm sorry, you have to make the tough decisions. Like they're lousy decisions. They're honestly not tough. I mean, these decisions are made for us pretty much. They're, they're not, they're not the kind of a decision where we're wrestling and wondering what the right thing to do is, you know, they're, they're very obvious at this point. And, and you know, I wish we could meet the needs. I've said all along, I'll say one more time, our most vulnerable learners in our districts are the ones that are losing the most here. Like nobody wins. But the one thing I scratch my head on is, is, and I assume we're going to hear for a couple of folks here that are telling us they want to go back in person. And I appreciate you addressing the board and sharing your opinion. And I'm glad we have the process to do that. Based on the emails that, that I've seen, there are some people who want to bring their kids back to school. I want to bring my kids back in person in school. And, and I understand the scenario that we're in, but my kids will be just fine. There are, there are vulnerable learners in our community that aren't just fine where we're at. And our community has made that choice for those learners by not allowing us to do in-person school. And that is the worst part about this whole thing. That is what pains me the most, being a school board member right now, is that I don't have an option for those most vulnerable learners. And Mr. Ryan very eloquently laid out, you know, when we have special ed students, we, you know, we need to prioritize meeting their needs. We need to prioritize certain students' needs that have a higher set of needs that we want to try to meet as best we can. And as soon as we can do more in those, for those students, we absolutely will. But, but our community has made a decision and our community is doing whatever they're going to do. And I understand everybody has a different set of data and a lens and they're doing what they're comfortable doing. Like this is on us as a community. If we want to operate school, there are other things we can't do. And I'll leave it at that. And I want to reiterate, I want to get back to school as much as anybody else. And those logistical constraints are hurting the most vulnerable learners the most.
Thank you, Mr. Hire. Trustees, anyone else? I can only see one or two faces. So you'll have to just speak up. Mr. Need, is that you?
That's me. Yeah. Thank you, President Horst. I agree with a hundred percent with Mr. Hire's comments. President Horst and I happened to be at the Board Office a couple of weeks ago on a scheduled meeting and we were delayed a bit because we saw the administration doing heroic efforts, trying to get enough people to actually be able to staff our school, one of our schools. I can tell everybody, I can tell the community, the administration did everything they could to continue face-to-face learning. And I applaud them and our staff and our teachers that all want the same thing. They all want to be back face-to-face. But the data and Dr. Ryan's rationale is compelling. The recommendation from the Health Department is very, very clear. As much as we would like to, we simply have to go distance for a period of time and with the fervent hope that the community will get the situation under control, these stabilize and start to go down so we can get our kids back face-to-face. And you know, many of us and Dr. Ryan, we all have kids in the district right now and they all want to go back. And I get that. My son wants to go back. It's his senior year. But you know, he understands that this is a temporary step. We need to take it. And you know, let's all do our best as a community so we can come back in the middle of January and come back face-to-face. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Need. Trustees, anyone else would like to ask a question or provide some feedback at this time? Okay, Mrs. McLean, if you could help me out, please, then we'll go to Mr. Meyer, who I believe was first on our list, and then Mrs. Monet. Mr. Meyer, if your microphone is on, if you would state your name for the record, please, and you'll have approximately two minutes to address the board.
Thank you, President Horst. My name is David Meyer. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Ryan, I am addressing you today from Clarkson Road, just outside the Board Office. Several like-minded parents have joined me here in an event which was planned on November 6th, when Dr. Ryan made the decision to return to distance learning. In his letter to parents posted on the CCS website, he stated, quote, "Barring a remarkable rebound in virus trends, it is possible that we could stay in distance learning through the end of the first semester on January 15th. A recommendation for next steps will be made at the November 23rd Board Meeting, Board of Education meeting. We were told that the board would be meeting to discuss next steps. This means that we as parents and community members would have an opportunity to have our voices heard. Instead of honoring his word, he made the decision on November 20th to continue distance learning with no input from those most affected by his decision. I have been told repeatedly that your decision is largely based on staffing issues, staffing issues created by the restrictive guidelines of the OCHD and the MDHHS. First, I would like to point out that these guidelines are recommendations. They are not mandates and they are contradictory to the guidelines provided by higher levels of our government. First, let us analyze the source. The MDHHS, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, is run by Director Robert Gordon. Director Gordon has an extensive history in both federal and state government appointments. Most of his roles have been from financial or operations advisory roles. He is not a doctor. He is not a medical professional. Director Gordon earned his bachelor's degree at Harvard University and his doctorate in jurisprudence from Yale University. He is a lawyer. Contrary to Director Gordon's opinion that our schools are dangerous virus breeding grounds, on Thursday, the day before your decision, the director of our CDC stated, quote, "The truth is for kids K through 12, one of the safest places they can be from our perspective is to remain in school. And it is really important that the following, that following the data, making sure we don't make emotional decisions about what to close and what not to close." Redfield continued, "I'm here to say clearly, the data strongly supports that K-12 schools, as well as institutes of higher learning, really are not where we are having our challenges. The director of our CDC is Robert R. Redfield, M.D. He is the 18th Director of the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention and Administrator of the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry. He has been a public health leader actively engaged in clinical research and clinical care of chronic human viral infections and infectious diseases for more than 30 years. We are listening to the wrong voices. There are many inconsistencies in your policies. These inconsistencies lead us as a community to question your motivations. Shortly after your announcement on November 6th, Dr. Ryan, the district sent an email to all families in the district inviting us to travel to the next volleyball game. You have repeatedly blamed the community for your failures to continue to operate the district in person and then you immediately invite that same community to the crowd, to crowd into a gym to watch a volleyball game. You have closed our early on intervention programs while keeping our early childhood center open. It was communicated to me that the ECC operates under a childcare license and therefore they can continue to operate. These children are the same..."
Your two minutes are up. Please wrap up your comments. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm almost done. These children are the same age. They are from the same community. They play on the same play structures and attend class just down the hall. The only significant difference between the two groups of kids are that these classes, these classes are in our Spice Dolls program are smaller and therefore safer and that they are paid for by the government. Closing the ECC would result in lost tuition and lower enrollment in the future. This closure was made for financial reasons and has affected the neediest children of our district adversely. Finally, this virus is not going away. It will be here next year and 10 years from now. We cannot continue to operate from a position of fear of a virus that has 99.98% survival rate. We need to put our children's education and mental health ahead of the fear of a largely manageable virus. It is time to fulfill your mission. It is time to create an environment where students, staff and families are not only safe and healthy, but also challenged, engaged and supported. It is time to open our schools. Thank you very much.
For your comments, Mrs. McLean. We'll move on to Mrs. Monet.
Hello.
We can hear you. Thank you so much. If you'll state your name, please, and you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Julie Monet. Hello, President Horst, Dr. Ryan and members of the board. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd also like to thank all of our district teachers who are adjusting to these circumstances and have really stepped up during the pandemic. It's been a difficult year to say the least and I appreciate everything that they have done. The reason I decided to call tonight is I have three children. One who is in junior high, one in middle school and one in elementary school. And, sorry, I'm going to take my headphones off here. Second here. My oldest daughter is in the virtual program. My middle daughter is doing distance learning. And my youngest daughter was in, was going to school in person for the last 11 weeks in another Oakland County district until her school made the decision last week to go remote. So I'm speaking as a parent who has seen all of these three different learning methods. And what I have seen is a huge, huge disparities between the learning methods. I understand the struggles and how everyone has had to sort of adjust. But I'd like to say that there are just huge disparities in, in what is occurring. And I do agree with Mr. Meyer that we need to focus on how this virus is spreading. And you know, some of the, some of the, you know, obviously ramifications of the remote learning. There's learning loss. I can see that. There's socialization that's affected. There's economic ramifications. Parents are quitting their jobs to stay home and teach their kids. And I've seen in my, even in my own daughter, who's only been home for about a week and a half now, her motivation has lessened. She's not as excited about school because she's doing school with me now and on Zoom calls a couple of times a day. This, you know, these, these negative consequences are going to have a lasting effect on our kids. And I would just like to say, I would urge each one of you in making this decision, not just, you know, through January, but going forward, to listen to the national health experts, as Mr. Meyer mentioned, from the NIH and CDC, including Dr. Redfield and Dr. Fauci. They have strongly urged schools to remain open. This virus is not being transmitted in schools as much as it is in small gatherings and in social arenas, like what you, what you have in the next few days, Thanksgiving. People are still going to gather for Thanksgiving. My own family personally, we're staying home, but there are several people that are still going to gather and still going to transmit this virus. I don't want to try to take people's personal freedoms away, but that is what all of these experts are saying, that the virus is being transmitted more so from social gatherings than from schools where there are tight protocols.
Thank you so much. I need you to wrap up your comments. Thank you very much.
So anyhow, I, I agree with and respect your decision to remain in remote learning through mid-January. But I just strongly urge you to continue to reexamine the science behind it, particularly with regard to how the virus is being transmitted. And should we decide to continue remotely beyond mid-January, then I believe this method needs to mimic in-person classes as much, as much as possible. Classes that go the full hour, Zoom calls that last the entire time. Just my own daughter today was let out of her science class 12 minutes after starting. So I would urge you all to try to find a way that we can, you know, hold everyone a little bit more accountable to the learning. And also, parents and teachers, I know we need to work together so that our kids can learn from home, but something needs to be done if we continue remote learning beyond mid-January. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I appreciate everyone's comments tonight and everyone listening in. Trustees, thank you so much. Before we move on, I was interested in the, as I didn't say anything beforehand, I was interested in the references to the national experts. I did watch the most recent Coronavirus Task Force. And, and I thought it was interesting, both callers referenced that because yes, they did. Dr. Head of the CDC did say that schools should be open, but there was also a qualification there, right? That, that, that they did talk about that where the real threat to schools is in these small gatherings, which I think is the exact point that Dr. Ryan and Mr. Hire both made. So I'm not sure where the breakdown in logic is occurring here, but that I thought was the exact point that we were trying to make as a community. as a community. And I don't think it's blaming, the school's trying to blame the community. We're trying to make the point that we are all responsible for this, that it isn't one or the other, that we're all responsible for it. And the interesting part about quarantine is that the CDC itself has the rules of quarantine on its own website. This isn't an Oakland County Health Department rule necessarily that we have to follow, even though we do. This is a CDC rule, the rule of quarantine, that is hamstringing us so, so tightly. So when we talk about following the science and the data, it would be nice if the folks at the CDC thought about the conflicting messages that they're sending when they talk about wanting us to keep schools open, yet imposing regulations on us that make it practically impossible to do so when the virus rates are at an impossible level for us to maintain operations. And I will leave it there.
Mrs. Horst, can I, can I just tag on to what you said? I think, I think-
Certainly.
A couple important things there. And number one is, when, when folks are required to quarantine, like, we don't have control over what those quarantine guidelines are. We have to follow that. And that, that just is the way it is. And, and, and whether they're good or not is, is, is up for, for folks to decide. We have to follow those guidelines. And, and that causes some logistical issues with, with what we have going on. I, I don't blame the community for the situation we're in. I don't blame anybody. I think the point that you were trying to make, that Dr. Ryan was trying to make, that I'm trying to make, is we all have part of the solution. If we wanna, if we wanna get somewhere with this and we wanna get back in person, we all own the solution. And, and, and that, I think, is what, where we're going with it. This, this isn't about whose fault it is or who had what party or attended what and spread it to who. I mean, we're in the midst of a pandemic. You know, we're trying to react and get kids back to school as quick as possible. I mean, I, I'm not aware that anybody wins in the distance learning model. You know, i- it's not like there's a, a secret winner in this model that we're, we're deciding to benefit. You know, everybody loses. Teachers don't like it. Students typically don't like it. I've heard a few that enjoy it. I'm not really sure how. Everybody loses. And, and, and so, I mean, I think we're all trying to pull in the same direction here to get us where we wanna go. And I think we all need to own part of the solution. That, that was my point earlier. I think that's the point you make. And again, I think Dr. Ryan has been super clear with that. And again, as we've gone through this process, I mentioned at the last board meeting, th- these last few decisions that have had to be made, there aren't a lot of options. You know, I mean, I, I, I'm certainly not willing to, to say to our superintendent, we should ignore quarantine guidelines and put people at risk. Like, that, that is not a, a position that I'm willing to take as a board member, and I don't see any of my colleagues willing to do that as well. I mean, we have to follow those quarantine guidelines, and that, that's the scenario we're in. And, and as quick as we can possibly get back in person, we're gonna do that.
And President Horst, just as a, a final comment, even looking at what we're trying to, you know, I take it very personally trying to build upon success to get our kids back in. So I can't let misinformation fly within our community, like the ECC as far as financially. It is a tuition-based program, but we are operating that program at a loss right now. My best financial recommendation to you right now would be to shut that down tomorrow until we could actually operate it for a profit. Right now, or not a profit, even to break even. And it's not, it's at a loss right now. But it's more important that we try to get a foothold in that face-to-face to increase and support what we can than to operate any, any other way that we know how right now. I just would be heartbreaking to think if anybody would actually leave to think that was. And that's completely public information as well. It'll come out in our audit.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to action items. Uh, 6.1 is approval of personnel changes. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel changes as presented.
Are there any questions or discussion on the personnel items in our packet? Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, the motion carries. Let me just say very quickly, I do see that we have another citizen who has raised her hand to address the board, and we will get to you at item nine. I just don't want you to think I did not notice you. Uh, item 6.2 is approval of new policy 8450.05, emergency temporary telecommuting. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves new policy 8450.05, the emergency temporary telecommuting as presented. Support.
Any questions or discussion from the board?
I just want to remind everybody that we are not doing the first and second reading, and we are putting this through for approval tonight due to the timeliness of the issue.
Thank you, Mrs. Crane. All right, seeing no questions or discussion, we'll move right to a roll call vote, please. Mrs. McLean?
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Hyer?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, the motion carries. COVID-19 learning plan. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the district's extended COVID-19 learning plan as presented.
Support.
I'm gonna ask Mrs. Mahoney to just make a few comments and walk us through what has been updated. This is our learning plan that is prescribed by recent state law. We have to affirm monthly. So Mrs. Mahoney, are you activated, elevated as a panelist? And can you walk us through just the few items that have been updated since our last affirmation, I guess, a month ago?
Good evening, Board of Education. I'd like to address just a couple of items that we did update on this learning plan. Under item two, which is our educational goals, we did state that our STAR in our I-ready assessments would be given three times this year in reading and math. And under the Return to Learn law, we had nine weeks to complete that first assessment, and it is complete. So as of Friday, November 6th, we did complete those assessments, and communication is now being shared with our families, which is new under this law. And that came through our Friday folders, also emails, as well as through parent view. This does include our Clarkson Virtual and our Renaissance Virtual, as well as our students in our distance learning that we're in face-to-face. Also, under item three, which is our instructional delivery, as Dr. Ryan did share on Monday, November 9th, all students did return to full distance learning. This was our model that we did begin the school year with. Because of the volume of virus cases, probable transmission, and the number of staff quarantined in the district, as recommended and delivered by Dr. Ryan tonight, this mode would be implemented through January 15th, which is a Friday, which is the end of our semester. Those are the two updates. The STAR assessment, as well as I-ready, and our learning mode that our students are engaging in.
Any questions for Mrs. Mahoney regarding the learning?
Uh, Mrs. Horst.
Mrs. Egan, please go ahead.
Yes, just a point of clarification. In the, um, the plan, it says January 18th, so um, it might just be helpful if we clarify what we mean by January 18th. Is that potentially the first start-back date?
Correct. Yes, we would, the second semester begins on January 18th, and our first semester ends on January 15th.
Right. I just wanted, you know, I think it's important to say that. Sometimes people hear the 15th, and then they see 18th in the documentation, and they're not sure what that really, what we're really doing.
Thank you, Mrs. Egan.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call vote, please?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Hyer?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, the motion carries. Item seven is report items. There are none this evening. Item eight is discussion items. There are none this evening. Item nine is citizen comments. We had two citizens at this point who wish to address the board on any topic. If there are any other citizens in the audience tonight who wish to address the board at this time, now is your time to indicate your interest in doing so. If you are joining us by phone, you'll need to press star nine. Uh, if you are joining us, I guess, by regular Zoom, you'll click on the participants button, and then the wave hand feature. Uh, Dr. Harding, if you are still there, would like to raise your hand again, we can activate you. You will be up first. Very good.
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. I'm sorry?
You'll state your name, please, and then you'll have approximately two minutes.
Okay, hi, I'm Erica Harding. As many of you know, I'm a primary care physician here in the community, and our office does a lot of testing, and we also have a significant hospital presence. So I'm I'm in the position to understand where we are on all fronts, and I'd like to thank the community and the parents for making the sacrifice of closing because the numbers that we were having of 6,000 cases a day, at 2% of those cases requiring hospitalizations, we cannot stay at that rate. We have ICUs expanding and taking away cardiac ICU beds to become COVID ICUs. We have been told, uh, when sending patients down from our Clarkson ER to a hospital that admits patients, there will be 50 people ahead of them waiting in line. These are all things that are happening right now. And quite frankly, the school was pushed into this. We should have closed restaurants several weeks ago. We should have closed gyms several weeks ago, and we should have placed a priority on keeping education open. Yes, smaller children are not as affected severely by COVID-19. But when we wait and wait and wait and do nothing else, we don't have any choice but to shut everything down. And that's where we are in, and we will dig ourselves out of this hole. But we, uh, I think need to approach this more holistically. I can tell you there aren't better suggestions out there for school management than what the Clarkson schools did. I'm, um, involved with our school health project, and from the beginning, I was talking to physicians across the country, and it's not like there are better ideas out there. So, um, what I would encourage the community to do is if you want to go back to in-person learning sometime in January, you cannot have a family Christmas, and you cannot have a New Year's party, period. That's it. No more than two households, and you have to keep the number small. We need to not continue with any sort of myth or fanciful thinking that we are going to have winter indoor sports. I don't see how people keep masks on while playing basketball. I don't see how wrestling even happens. And really, let's put a, let's put a priority on in-person learning and, you know, talk with the MHSAA about not opening up sports for these kids. Why get their hopes up for something that we know is not going to work? And we need to demand from our legislators that, yes, school should be a priority. And let's look at what Dr. Fauci actually said, and let's look at what some of the health leaders in the country are saying. They're saying keep schools open and close the bars. So if we don't have a little bit better of a COVID response plan as a state, then we're just gonna keep doing like we're doing, and we're gonna get pushed in this situation again. So maybe our legislators aren't gonna take the lead on this, but what, again, that, that means is we can't go to the bars. And not just people who have kids in school, but the community at large, because we're all connected. And what was very frightening for me is, as a physician, last Thursday, I logged in and I had three cases of either a COVID exposure or a positive COVID test from people that I know were taking it seriously. They don't have kids in school, and they were isolating. They are either elderly or had a kidney transplant, so it is not staying out of our vulnerable population. So again, we will get through this. Our hospitals and staff are on the brink of being able to handle it. But we need to start demanding from our legislators that we approach this holistically a little better, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Harding. Next up, we have Jennifer Vogt. Please tell me if I pronounced that correctly or incorrectly, I hope. Looks like we can hear you.
Oh, hi, yes. Um, yeah, my name is Jennifer Vogt. I'm a nurse practitioner at a local hospital. And I appreciate the time to speak. I was, or I've been working on the front line since March, and in July, I was exposed to a patient. And at that time, the CDC, which they are currently recommending that unless you are symptomatic, you do not need to be COVID tested. We are overusing COVID tests. We are testing asymptomatic people inappropriately. And I, just last week, one of my coworkers, her daughter was COVID positive. My coworker is still reporting to work every single day, and she is to report to work unless she becomes symptomatic. The school board, I strongly urge you to reevaluate how you are handling the quarantine. If somebody is not symptomatic, they can continue to report to work. That is the reason why we're wearing masks, and children are wearing masks, and everybody in the school is wearing masks. The masks are protecting us. I take this very seriously because of my three children who are virtual learning. It's a very big struggle. Very sorry. It's very hard. It's hard to be, have them home and not doing their activities and everything else. And if we wear masks and we don't test asymptomatic people, this disease is not going anywhere. But we can handle it. We can change our guidelines in terms of quarantining and things like that, and get our children back into school. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Appreciate it. Right, I see we have one more caller. I don't have a name. It looks like we have you. Is it? I need you to unmute on your end. 420?
I think it's the 494 number.
494 number, okay. I need you to state your name, please, for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Good evening. This is Stacy Saker, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk this, this evening. I want to start by stating that I fully support the measures that the school has taken to keep our kids safe. And I agree, it is difficult having the kids at home, but it is better than having them sick or worse. The one thing I do want to bring up is I, I don't understand the varying schedule. Having them start at 7:30 when they're in school, but 8:30 when they're at home, and 9 o'clock on Wednesdays, I think is creating a lot of confusion and makes it more prone to the children either being late for class or not being in class. And I'm also concerned at the level of the education. It is so much harder for them to learn and for the teachers to try to get points across when they can't be in the room with them. And having one half-day less each week, I think, is just not making things better for the children. So again, I fully support going virtual. I understand all the measures needed to take them safe. I would just ask that you reconsider the time schedule of the day and try to make it a little bit more consistent for our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments tonight. Mr. Hyer, did that clear our comments?
Believe it did.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone who participated in our meeting this evening with our comments. We hear you, and we appreciate you. Uh, we will move on to information items. Our next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 14th. Uh, right now, scheduled for 7:00 PM format to be determined. Uh, there's a very strong chance we will remain in the virtual format, and if so, we will be at 5:30, just like we are now. But obviously, we will make that announcement as we get closer. Item 11 is a closed session for negotiations discussion. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education-
I move the Board of Education goes into closed session for the purpose of contract negotiations with the collective bargaining unit.
Mrs. McLean? Oh, sorry, Mrs. Egan, thank you. Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mr. Hyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst, can I, can I echo one more thing you said of that? I want to thank the community for addressing us and being present in our meetings. I think you advocating for your kids is what we all want to do for our kids and what we'd expect everybody to do. So I appreciate the input and, and discussion and collaboration. Hopefully, we can all be part of the solution going forward.
Thank you. All right, we will now exit this format, and we will move into our closed session, and we will adjourn our meeting from closed session as no further action will be taken.
And Mrs. McLean is going to stay in this session to keep the open meeting open, right? We didn't, it's been a while since we did this.
Oh, right, okay, so we're going to, so board members leave this.
Board members are going to leave and join the closed session link. Mrs. McLean is going to stay here in the open session link, and we will come back here to adjourn the meeting in public with no action expected.
Got it, okay. So board members, close this, go to your email, find the link for the other session. We'll see you there in just a moment. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Great. I will return us to open session. Item 13 is adjournment. May I have a motion, please?
I move to adjourn.
Support.
Mrs. McLean? Yeah, I have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Crane?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Catalina?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Hyer?
Yes.
Mr. Need?
Yes.
Mrs. Horst?
Yes, motion carries, and we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good evening, everybody.